I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, can we get a roll call please?
Mr. Semenaro?
Here.
Ms. Hamel, here. Mr. Kurtz?
Mr. McGlaughlin?
Here.
Mr. Potts? Mr. Shaheen?
Here.
Ms. Frodowski?
Here.
Mr. Wolf?
Here.
And Mr. Basil?
Here. Okay, under announcements, we'll be having an executive session after this meeting to discuss personnel. Also, do any board members have any agenda edits? Okay, seeing none, I've been given a couple of edits for the board, so let me go through them all with you. So, under 8A, we're going to add June 24, 2013 voting meeting minutes to be approved. Under, everybody got that? Under 12C, personnel approvals, we go to 12C-1H. Instead of saying adjustment due to course credits completed, it should say adjustment due to full year long-term substitute credited service per contract. And that's the same for 12CI as well. So, we're changing what's in parentheses to read adjustment due to full year long-term substitute credited service per contract as opposed to courses completed. Under 12C-2A, the dollar amount instead of being 1303 should be 1321. Under 12C-2B, it should be 1257 instead of 1240. And this is due to the fact that these two dollar figures that were previously listed were as for the 1213, 2012-13 contract as opposed to 1314 contract. So, the adjustments are up. And then last, 12C-5C, the bottom of the page, that number instead of being 3,180, it should read $2,968. Okay, it should be 27 units instead of 30 units, so it's a lower amount. Okay? Okay, having said that, procedures for public participation are the inside blue jacket cover of the agenda. You have three minutes to speak to the board, approach the microphone, state your name and address. Are there any public comments on the agenda? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to recognitions.
My mic went dead, so I don't feel like yelling. Thank you. I'd like to recognize this evening John Dugan. For those of you who haven't had a chance, I changed up my opening day presentation a little bit this year to try to promote a little bit more use of technology and media and also to promote our high school TV club. John partnered with me to do the video that you see, it's actually posted on the website now, so if you have a chance to take a look at it, please feel free, it's out there for the public as well. And John really was very helpful in getting that done, and I was also trying to encourage student involvement and the kind of entrepreneurship that I think is being pushed in education today. So, John, if you'd like to come forward and be recognized, I just want to say thank you for your help.
Do I have a motion for 8A?
Second.
First and second, any discussion?
I don't know that I can vote on any area, so I don't know if that matters.
Which?
The minutes I was.
Okay, then let's just put 8A first.
Okay, 8A, as amended. Okay? You all right with that?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Okay, Ms. Hamel, can we have a roll call please for 8A?
8A, motion made by Mr. Shaheen, second by Mr. Semenaro. Monica Hamel, yes. Mr. McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Shaheen?
Yes.
Ms. Frodowski is?
I guess I'll abstain.
Yeah, that's a move. And Mr. Semenaro?
Yes.
And Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
And Mr. Basil?
Yes. Okay, moving on, do I have a motion for?
B and C.
For B and C?
Second.
We have a second.
Hold on. 8, B and C?
Mm-hmm. Mr. Shaheen was first, Mr. Semenaro was second.
So, we're starting with Mr. McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Shaheen?
Yes.
Mr. Frodowski?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Semenaro?
Yes.
Ms. Hamel, yes. And Mr. Basil?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay, great. Moving on to nine, presentations by board members. Do we have any correspondence? None?
No.
Okay. Mr. Kurtz is not here for the BCIU report, although we did receive something in the mail. Mr. Wolf, BCTC.
Do not have a report.
Okay.
Our next meeting will be this Wednesday at the East Campus at 7:00.
Okay, great. Moving on to legislative report, Mr. Shaheen.
Just a little bit of motion movement on the property tax reform, but the more I see the names they're jumping up board supporting, it just happens some of them happen to be coming up for election in the fall, so not too sure if this is a bad way to jump in at times, so.
Okay. Any other reports? If we have any committee meetings that we seem to?
Week from Wednesday will be the curriculum instruction.
Okay, so a week from Wednesday is the curriculum instruction meeting. And finance, we're planning on having a meeting this Wednesday. Okay? Buildings and grounds, do we have anything, Dr. Adel?
No, if I could just interject, I just want to make a public thank you to the buildings and grounds crew for their hard work this summer in moving everything from APC into our new AEC, and also for if you've had a chance to get around to the grounds, everything looks really great with the trimming of all the hedges and the plants and the mulch, and they did a really fantastic job. I'd also just like to say we also started school today, we had a very smooth opening, and everything minus the normal strangeness of being in AEC, in a new building, everything seemed to go very well today so far.
Okay, great. Any questions for Dr. Adel?
No, but the future meetings, can we get those updated on the webpage? Don't we typically have this on there?
Not until they're approved to be posted.
Which meetings are you referring to?
Yeah, like the next Wednesday, the?
The finance committee meetings and the?
That is all. And ours is always? Was it there today? Yes. I missed it, thank you. Curriculum instruction is always the second Wednesday. I recommend, I couldn't see it on here, that's all.
Are they not on there, or are they on the website?
I do not put them on until they're approved to be that we're going to have them.
Gotcha. Well, I think what we probably should do is put them on as standing meeting times, and then if we can, then we'll just cancel them.
That's great.
Yeah, that way we?
We can do that.
We filled out the calendar for the year, and everybody knows when the meetings are taking place.
Great.
Okay. Okay, great. Thank you, Mr. McGlaughlin, for bringing that up. Financial approvals, do I have a motion for?
A through F.
A through F?
Second.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Shaheen?
Right.
Second by?
I heard.
Mr. Semenaro?
Mr. Semenaro, yep. Any discussion? I just had a quick question. In terms of the retainer, has that changed at all from last year, is it the same?
No, the retainer is the same for about the last five years.
Right.
And the hourly rate's the same for about the last three or four years, so it hasn't changed.
Right. I just want to make sure that we got that out there in the public. Okay, any other discussion? Great. All right, let's have a roll call please.
Mr. Shaheen?
Yes.
Ms. Frodowski?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Semenaro?
Yes.
Ms. Hamel, yes. Mr. McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Basil?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Great. Moving on to 12.
Okay. We have a first and we have a second. Any discussion?
Because I just have one, I know we've discussed this in the past, I know the administration's done the best job they can at times, but there's many of these that are retroactive leaves and stuff prior to the date. One in here for August 21st, again, not that we would probably ever not grant them, but there's always that possibility where something could happen. I mean, we talked about this when it came to coaching, some of these other things, that putting something on that's already been going on for a week and a half or something doesn't make a lot of sense because it could be rejected.
Is there a way, is there a way for the district to, I don't know, get that to us ahead of time or to delay the approval? I mean, some of these are just within a day or two, but?
Because you have another problem, like you've got one that's, and again, I think the pastor said no, anyway, that's August 21st, we've got a couple of them that are retroactive August 1st, and you've got positions where you have to move positions around, which I know has to happen with schools started, and if somewhere along the line somebody said no, then you get people in positions that haven't been approved by the board, you have people taking leave that haven't been approved by the board, and potentially it could present an issue. It's not as blatant as it used to be. I mean, years ago, we'd get pages of stuff that some of them could be a month and a half out.
Yep. Some of these are medical.
Yeah, they're medical, so we can't list it, unfortunately, some things have come up quite quickly. And as far as the retroactive, they were both approved back in August, but unfortunately the step was listed incorrectly, and that's why they're back on there.
But again, I mean, this isn't the only time I've seen.
I understand, yeah.
And so, just again, just bringing it up so that we're not retroactively approving something that somebody, A, could have been paid for already, or he's admitted in the past, or sometimes somebody's already gone out and leave and come back, and then we're moving.
I think if there's a way as part of your process of preparing for the committee's whole poll, if you could look to see if there's anything like that that's going to happen before the voting, if you could put it on the agenda, maybe the whole committee could just go put votes on them, if that's possible.
It's a possibility.
If I have the information, does it go on there?
Yeah, or, I mean, if it has to go on retroactively, then, you know, maybe we just have a, well, you know, the explanation is like she has it now in the parentheses, which says, you know, original leave and absence request was approved from July 22nd to August 20th at the 12th voting, August 12th voting meeting. You know, if we can get some more detailed explanation as to why it came in late, that may help the board understand it better. Okay, any other discussion? All right, seeing none, can we get a roll call, no, please?
And motion 12A through E?
Yep.
Made by Mr. Shaheen, second by Mr. Semenaro. Ms. Frodowski?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Semenaro?
Yes.
Ms. Hamel, yes. Mr. McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Shaheen?
Yes.
And Mr. Basil?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay. Anything under programs?
Nothing to bring forward at this time.
Policy?
That's in the holding pattern right now.
Okay. Nothing on transportation, old business?
Just on transportation, we all received an email about a transportation issue, walking, I don't know if it's done anything, but it was a, one of the taxpayers sent an email about her child having to walk on a side of a road that was not paved nor with a sidewalk for 200 yards to catch a bus.
It's been handled.
Worried about winter time.
Been handled.
Okay, again, just wanted to make sure.
As in fixed?
Okay, thank you.
There's a stop and add.
Okay.
Thanks to Mr. Boyer, he handled that with transportation. Okay, anything else under transportation? Old business? I just wanted to bring up, Ms. Hamel had sent an email around to the board that, I guess, a notice went out regarding the activity fees, and there wasn't anything on there pertaining to paying for these things online?
I was looking for, I have the form, I was filling out my daughter's form last night, and I was going to do it online, but then I picked up the form, and I realized there was really nothing on there indicating to me how to do it online, so I thought if all the students got this form that I have, and then I looked it up on the internet, it just doesn't explain anything on the new procedure. And then I went on activity fee to look at the website, and then there's something there, but if this was what everybody received, then it didn't indicate what really to do. It just says cash, money order, check, free, reduce. And I thought we were trying to get away from cash, trying to get everybody to do it online, and I just thought that this just didn't help the process.
Right.
That was all.
No, I agree, I mean, there should be an option on there, you know, register online with some instructions or a link or something else to the website.
I don't think they're going to get away from the people that want, I know at least a couple times I mentioned paying online, I'm not going to pay the extra percent, I'm just going to check it. You're going to get that, you're going to get something just convenience, they're going to do it online, so.
Yeah, but I think what we want to do is get away from the actual cash?
Yeah, right.
Because there's very?
Right, $150 gas coming in is easily lost.
Yeah, right.
And the second game of the ball is gone.
Okay. So, Mr. Boyer, you're on that?
Uh, yeah.
Or how's that going to be handled?
I'll talk to Michelle and see if we can get maybe something like a revised form, especially for winter. Just to let you know, we did present so far $1,700 through the online process.
Okay, good.
Today, well, not just today, but since we opened it up, and then the payments, basically all the payments from the public have been coming directly to the business office. Instead of procedure for the money, and then take care of the forms and different to Michelle. So, it's been going pretty smoothly. Today, we had this enormous amount of people coming in, so.
Right.
It's been working out pretty good.
Okay.
Mark, what's the ratio between people sending in check payments versus doing online? What is it?
It's more people are sending in right now, or hand delivering it to the administrative office. So, the $1,700, I think it was about, there's multiple payments made, maybe the club fee and the athletic fee, so it's probably about, I'd say at least 10 individuals so far made the payments, maybe about, probably about 12 actually, that made their payments online thus far. So, we check it every day, keep a tally of what's coming in.
I think when you have a conversation with Ms. Gossem, did it agree that the coaches and even her herself or the principals can push or make people aware that online is available, then hopefully that will direct more traffic that way.
And I have a question, with the lunch, lunch pay on there, when you do this, like when they put money in for lunches, do they get charged a 4.75%?
No, that was a change that happened in July with the company. They still get charged the simple transaction fee for the lunches, they added for the school, the fees part, the 4.75%. That was a change, that was not the case when we had spoken through revenue enhancement committees and we presented that, the case was still that $1.95 transaction fee, and in July they had a policy change. I actually called the company saying, what's going on with the fees? And they said, well, we had a change in how we're going to run our business, and they decided to do that processing fee then.
Well, it sounds to me then that we should probably be looking at an alternative.
Yeah, because that's really high compared to other services.
Right.
Well, the difference between the company that we had looked at, we had compared the school lunch with the other company, was where the district was paying that processing fee. Now, granted, it was probably a little less, but now we're, the end user pays that processing fee. But I do agree with you that it is very high, I mean, doing the simple math, it's, you're paying a lot to use the credit card option for the district, so we can, wait, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I just, if we're already committed to this for the fall, then I think we need to be making a transition to something else for the winter sports. And my recollection was either, we were looking at pay schools, and it was less than 2%, and the other one is PayPal, I mean.
Music side uses PayPal, I mean, there are two, it's like basically half of them.
Half of that, yeah.
Is that negotiable? Can you call them back and say, you know, we could go to another service and get a lesser rate, and, you know, or do you want to keep our business? I mean, what?
I was speaking to the vice president today of the organization, so I can, he asked me for any feedback, because they're trying to enhance this side of their product versus the school lunch, so I can talk to him tomorrow to see if there is some leeway that maybe we can go back and set simple $1.95 transaction fee.
I think I would tell them, look, if you guys don't change it, we're going to leave, we're going to take our business somewhere else, it's too high, and let them decide what they're going to do. I mean, there's alternatives out there for us to use that's going to save the taxpayer and the parents a lot more money. And we're talking $130,000, $1,000,000, I mean, we're not there yet in terms of these transactions online, but at 4%, my gosh, that seems like a?
That's 4.75.
Yeah, I know, it's way too high.
It sounds like we must not be under contract with them for the fees and for their services if they're just changing the fees without our approval.
Right.
So, if we're not under contract with them, I think we need to use that as a bargaining to say, we're going to go somewhere else.
Right. I'm in agreement there. Anybody else?
Yes.
Yep, okay. All right, new business? Anyone? Presentation by the public on issues.
My first question is, I'm curious as to why the specials in elementary schools were cut down to 30 minutes to 45 minutes? I was wondering what the gain is from cutting this time? I also wanted to know what you were replacing it with, since the school day is the same that you were allowing out 15 minutes earlier? And then I would also like to know that since there is not enough time in gym to conduct the presidential fitness program, will the school have any funds cut from federal or state government since you are not participating in that? And I'm asking, I just like to say that I do believe like a special should be reduced to 45 minutes?
Okay, just let me make sure I understand all your questions. You're asking why the specials are cut from 45 minutes to 30 minutes, what we gained from that, what we're replacing it with, and did we lose any federal funding because of cuts in the gym program?
Because of not participating in the presidential fitness program.
Right, okay. Dr. Adel?
First question grew out of a budgetary constraints that we've been dealing with over the last three, four years. In the administration's examination of the budget, the board charged us with trying to find areas that we could potentially make reductions. The specials that you refer to are not mandated to be done as separate specials by the Chapter IV regulations of the state, so the district, any district really that's a public school, is at its discretion as to how much they actually want to offer of any of those subjects. So, early in the process, and I apologize, it might be a little bit longer answer than you're expecting, but early in the process, we actually contemplating, we looked at reducing them potentially even a little further, but we decided that in order to try to still save them, we could still do them in a partial format, and this is the first year obviously for doing that, and we will certainly track how that works going forward. So, the answer is very simple, it was out of necessity in trying to deal with a very, very difficult budget that we had to take a look at all aspects of our program, and this was one of those aspects of the program that unfortunately the board, based on my recommendation and the administration's recommendation, reduced. And when I say recommendation, it was with a recommendation that we still were able to keep it instead of totally losing it. The second part, as to the presidential fitness program, I'm aware of that program, I would have to do a little bit more research to understand how that's been impacted, but I can tell you, there is no funding from any source tied into us losing anything if we're not involved in the presidential fitness program. That I know for a fact. I don't know as far as, I'd have to do a little more research as to whether or not the PE teachers can still, quote, participate in that program. So, is there another question?
I think that was it.
Well, the time went to curriculum.
Oh, I'm sorry, you did ask, and what was replaced, I'm sorry you did ask, that would just be more instructional time based on what's in the reduction, there'd just be more time in class on the other subject areas.
So, the teachers weren't working, the other teachers weren't working that 15 minutes, so are they absorbing that special?
No, they actually are just doing more teaching. Those teachers are now, their time has actually been reduced, so they're not absorbing anything from that. They're absorbing the student time, not the teacher time.
But those teachers were doing something else?
They were, they were engaging in the PE class or the art class or the music class, instead of being 30 minutes, it was 45 minutes.
Right.
So, the teachers were getting more planning time as a result of that.
So, based on the question, planning time?
No, we're still meeting our contractual requirement for planning time for the teachers with this reduction.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
In regards to the activity fee, I know my doctoring is directed to go to the website, so that's how we work into a piece of paper so we can find out how to go ahead and pay our activity fee. I'll tell you, I write a check, because I'm not going to spend $7 to pay $150 when I can write a check for free. If you talk to ETC, Lady Mitchell Football, they all use Google Docs and pay now, and it's a much more efficient way, parents don't feel like they're having to pay extra to pay, and it would be something that could be good for you to look into, because you could go ahead and Google it up, get all the information, leave it into a spreadsheet, boom, you know what's using what activity, and you're not having to go through a time rematch every day. My other question, or the purple or the pink cards, the blue cards, can we get them online? Can we get that information into grade book so parents can go online and say, you know what, we still have the same pediatrician, we still live at the same address, these are the same people, I can still pick up my kids in the case of an emergency. Click, I've approved it for this year, done. I have two children, I have four of those forms to fill out. To be able to do that would be incredibly grateful, I'm sure most of you will agree. I know families that have four children in the district, and they are filling out the same information over and over. If we can get it onto grade book, that would be a simple way, just click, those that don't do it, then you send those forms home, so those parents can then fill out.
Thank you for the suggestion.
I don't want you to reveal any security or anything like that, but take this as a suggestion. 911 is very easy to call if you're. 911 is very easy to call if you're complex, calm, you have somebody running around with a gun or a gunner, load a bit of ammunition out of the door, but if it, you know, it's out there. Is there any way, or if we do fight, or if they take the suggestion, some kind of panic button for our secretary, it's something under their desk that nobody even knows about, it's all going, goes right to our police headquarters, and they're out there, et cetera. Just a suggestion, if we have it, wonderful, if not, let's look into it. And another thing we might want to look into, having our school this week join in every common willingness in this state to take a lesson for Philadelphia. Don't go in a corporate, we're not open until you open up your wallet, give us some money
Thank you for your comments. Any other public comment? Okay, seeing none, do I have a motion adjourned? We have a second, meeting adjourned, thank you.